Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. At the meeting announcement, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Here.
We have nine members, President.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one, Madam Clerk, correct?
Yes.
Can we, is there somebody here from the Fathers Take Your Fathers to School Day? Do we know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, I wasn't sure because they asked about coming on, and I just had to work with Madam Clerk.
Yeah, no, we don't have anything from Protect Your Fathers to School Day.
Okay, okay, so the proclamation we have, what do we have?
It's your proclamation, and it's for the Tau Beta Eta fraternity.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Council President Cal Smith presents Bill 1357. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Tau Beta Eta fraternity on their first anniversary and thank them for their selfless work in the city of Pittsburgh and surrounding areas, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, April 1st, to be Tau Beta Eta Fraternity Ink Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Could you motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Proclamation is approved. Do we have any other ones, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilman Kraus has one.
I apologize, Councilman Kraus, I wish I had taken you first.
Oh, no, you're good. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1358. Whereas the Pittsburgh Film Office is a nonprofit organization that promotes the city of Pittsburgh and the greater southwestern Pennsylvanian region as an excellent location for movie, television, and commercial production. And whereas since its inception in 1990, the Pittsburgh Film Office has assisted with 195 feature films and television productions filmed in southwestern Pennsylvania that generated an economic impact of more than $2 billion for the region. And whereas in 2007, the Pittsburgh Film Office played an important role in supporting the Pennsylvania Film Tax Credit, a program that allows a 25% tax credit to productions that spend at least 60% of the production budget in the Commonwealth. And whereas in 2019, three feature films and two television series were filmed in the city and region, adding more than $150 million into the regional economy. And whereas the 21st Annual Academy Awards themed benefit, the Netflix Presents Lights Glamour Action, is sponsored by Hallmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, will be held virtually on Saturday, April 24th, 2021, to both celebrate another outstanding year of the film industry in our region and support the mission of the Pittsburgh Film Office to market and promote the Pittsburgh region to lead to a future with more family sustaining careers in our film industry. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and honor the important work of the Pittsburgh Film Office and declare Saturday, April 24th, 2021, to be Pittsburgh Film Office Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
In a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Bill, you're, yeah, there you are. Bill, could you say a few words, and then can you introduce our special guest?
Yes, absolutely. My name's Bill Urbannick. I'm the City Council Budget Director, but I also serve on the Pittsburgh Film Office board. Want to really thank City Council and especially Councilman Bruce Kraus for the ongoing support of the Film Office over the years. As you know, the economic impact that it provides, not only by showcasing the city across the country and around the world, but also the support of local labor. All the unions, many of these are affected in a positive light by providing work. And over the last few years, with the amount of work that we've been able to get, it's actually become a career where folks are able to go out and buy houses. And that's everything from carpenters to grips to other folks that are working in the film industry. This year, just like a lot of other organizations, unfortunately because of COVID, we're going to have to do things a little differently. But in the film industry, they say the show must go on. And that is the title of this year's Lights Glamour Action, and it's sponsored by two industries that helped to get us through. One's the healthcare industry, and that's Hallmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, and of course Netflix. Without Netflix and TV, I think a lot of folks would be having problems this year. But the event is going to be April 24th at 8:00 PM, and I think folks can sign on to PittsburghFilm.org and sign up, make a donation. And this year is going to be easier for me because I don't have to buy my wife a dress, although after saying this, I'm going to have to. But I'm going to dress up in my tux. The dogs are going to be real happy because we're going to buy from a local restaurant, get a little bit of wine, and stay home all night. And with that, I'd like to introduce the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Film Office, who's been our lifeblood for more than 20 years, and that's Dawn Keiser. Dawn?
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Madam President, Councilman Kraus, and everyone else. Thank you so much. We really can't do what we do without the support of all of you. And thanks to our esteemed board member, Bill Urbannick. He's one of the best and has kept us going. For those of you who weren't on earlier, you know, I'll brag a little bit. We have three television series shooting. We have two feature films coming and probably 20 more that want to be here. It's super busy because everyone's gotten to the end of Netflix, Amazon Prime, and Hulu, and we're all desperate for content. We're thrilled to be celebrating the Oscars and the film industry in southwestern Pennsylvania. It will be online again. The show must go on, online. We're really thrilled at the level of sponsorship we're getting. We know it's been a tough year for everyone, so you'll be able to link into our website at PGHfilm.org and join us. Make a donation, not make a donation. We're happy to have you. It'll be an hour-long program, and it should be a lot of fun. But look, the film industry is providing family sustaining jobs in this region. We're returning $218 for every dollar that's been invested in the Film Office. We're at 1.5 billion and counting, and we really expect 2021 to be a great year. So I appreciate all your support. If you have any questions, have any concerns in your communities, I know Councilman Wilson got a trial by fire a little bit with the bridge coming down a little bit on the north side this, about a month ago, but thank you for all your help over there. We got done what we needed to get done, and Netflix is still happy and wants to come back to Pittsburgh. So again, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. You always make it a great year for us with our proclamation. So I appreciate you letting me join you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I don't know that it can be stressed strongly enough, the economic advantage of the film industry here in our little portion of Hollywood, if you will, locally. And I was going to ask Dawn if we had accurate numbers today as to what the film industry generates here, but she already delivered them. But 1 point, what, billion?
We're at 1.5 billion and counting since the start of the Film Office. Typically, we're 100 million per year. I'd like to remind you, we use audited financial statements. These are not numbers using multipliers. This is the direct economic impact we get from their audited financials. So we know exactly what they spend. I will tell you, I have over 5,000 people that have been back at work since they, we started filming again in November, and we want to keep all those people working, get them back off unemployment, and be able to sustain their families. So it's been a really good run. We expect 2021 to be good. 2022, 2022 should be even better, but we're on track for 100 million this year as well.
Yeah, just those numbers are staggering in terms of benefit. And you heard our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick, espouse how that then begins to multiply and branch out and create family sustaining jobs and finance families that can buy homes and put roots in the neighborhoods and so forth and so on. Can't do it without you and need you to know just how important you are to us and how much we appreciate you. So thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you, and make sure everybody keeps their fingers crossed for Ma Rainey. It has a ton of Oscar nominations, and it should be doing really well. And then Denzel Washington and Netflix plan on being back next with, you know, the rest of the series of August Wilson's plays. So he's got eight more to do. So we've got a lot of work coming in. So thank you again for all your help and support.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Bill, very much.
Well, thank you. Any other members? Anything? Okay, so I just, yes.
No, I just wanted to chime in if I could real quickly. I just wanted to congratulate Dawn and Bill and the rest of your team. You know, I didn't realize the economic impact that you have in this region. It's really, really nice to hear. A little disappointed, I think that red carpet party you have every year is my favorite. So we'll look forward to getting back to that next year. But in the meantime, I just wanted to say congratulations and thanks for all the work you do.
Thank you. Next year's party will be bigger and better than ever, and we're encouraging everyone to order food, stay home, and enjoy the night, and we'll see you all live and in person now on the red carpet next year.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you and congratulations. Thank you for all your work in Pittsburgh. Thank you, Councilman Kraus, for recognizing. And I thank you, Bill Urbannick, for serving on the board. But I do want to mention, anybody who knows Wendy Urbannick knows that she will buy her own dress if she wants it in winter.
Absolutely. I'm going to have to pay anyway.
With that, with her own money. With that said, we have Councilman O'Connor. That's the end of proclamations, correct?
Councilwoman President, we overlooked one prop. You have another prop to be read into the record. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Thank, no, you sent me, they sent me an updated version, but that phone is charging, so I'm going off the old sheets. So please, thank you.
Council President Smith presents Bill Number 1356. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, to be the late Mr. Patrick W. Quinday in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if anyone knows Pat Quinn, but he was a tremendous leader in Mount Washington in Duquesne Heights area, and he served, he not only served on the board for Washington Heights Athletic Association for years, he also served as the Board President for REAMREC. He was one of those people that, no matter what it was that was needed in the Mount Washington area, he was there ready to roll up his sleeves and help in a most positive way. And he really has been a great leader and passed away suddenly. So our condolences to his family, also a great family and great, great people in the area. So with that said, I just want to offer condolences to his family. Thank you. And that moves us on to approve that one. The will of council for Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Clerk, can you just read the last two paragraphs?
Sure.
Okay.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1354. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges Congress, especially federal elected officials representing the city of Pittsburgh, to support HR and SR1, the For the People Act, to protect American democracy, and be it further resolved that this will of council shall be shared with the offices of the United States Senators Robert Casey and Patrick Toomey to communicate the will of this legislative body as the Senate considers and debates SR1.
We have a, do we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, just briefly, if everybody is seeing what they're doing at various states about disenfranchising voters all across, you know, taking away same-day voting, mail-in ballots, this is just something, this is a bill that's in the federal level to have a standard all across the country, which I think would help a lot more people get invested into voting, making it a lot easier. We just saw our last election, mail-in ballots was a lot easier for a lot of people. So this is just a step for us to support that because, you know, they're talking about eliminating polling locations and making it even harder for people to vote. So I think this is a good thing for us to support, and I want to thank my colleagues for their support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Certainly, Madam President.
Reverend Burgess?
Certainly, election suppression is a new form, not new, a revived form of our country's racist past. We should not, we should all support eliminating voter suppression and making it easier for people to vote. At the same time, we elected officials should also carry ourselves that we do not encourage racist activity by our own self and our own staff. We also should hold ourselves to a higher level of accountability. So we should both do two things. We can chew gum at the same time. We can make these somewhat meaningless proclamations, but really, real change comes from us standing up and being adults and responsible for our own actions.
Do we have any other members? Seeing that, that moves us on to Councilwoman Strasburger. She has a will of council as well. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President. If you, Madam Clerk, could read the first clause and then the last two, that would be great.
Okay. Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1355. Whereas, as of March 13th, 2021, 29 states had filed legislation to limit transgender athletes from participating in sports, as well as the federal bill, HR 8932, Protect Women's Sports Act. Now, therefore be it resolved, Pittsburgh City Council denounces the attempts of state and federal legislators to prohibit transgender athletes from participating in sports on a youth and collegiate level, and urges sports programs, both youth and collegiate, within the state to adopt and support transgender inclusive policies for their teens. Be it further resolved that a copy of this will of council shall be sent to the Allegheny County delegation of the Pennsylvania House and Senate, the chairs and minority chairs of the State House and Senate Education Committees, Governor Tom Wolf, Pennsylvania, Acting Secretary of Education, No Ortega, Congressman Mike Doyle, Senator Pat Toomey, and Senator Bob Casey.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved. Back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I want to thank my council colleagues for voting in favor of this important will of council, because on a week where we're, we are marking the International Day of Trans Visibility tomorrow, and at a time when we're seeing a record number of legislative attacks against transgender individuals and especially athletes, I think it's really important to send the message to trans youth and trans athletes that there are people here in City Council in leadership positions that support you. And, you know, evidence shows that women, cisgender women, are not threatened by transgender athletes. They don't feel threatened. They don't feel as if they are being infringed upon in any way. And some of the bills that are being introduced or have passed, like the one in Idaho, would make youth athletes who challenge the law participate in really terrible and violating type of exams, physical exams. And I think that if we are going to talk about supporting women's sports, we should do that in other ways. There are many ways that we can ensure that women's sports get the respect that they deserve, other than discriminating against trans athletes and sending a terrible message to trans youth. You know, one big, one big issue that we see in women's sports is that they are treated as something that needs to be protected, treating them sort of as infants. And I think that they need to be respected and given the money and the support that they're needed at all levels of sports. So I really appreciate everyone's support for this and wanted to send that strong message to people out there who might be paying attention, might be listening the day before the International Day of Trans Visibility. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing that, I'm just going to add that, you know, Councilwoman, I actually think it's insulting to think that women would be any less than, than any male athlete. I tell people all the time that my sister Judy was such an athlete that she, she taught guys how to play ball, that went on to play professional ball. And one of the people that she played ball with and actually got in a fight with because he missed a ball was Danny Marino. And so I just want to say that, you know, I know how she struggled just to be, you know, even taken seriously and the challenges she had. But I tell you, she earned her respect. And to this day, a lot of people remember the stories of her growing up in Oakland and in the Hill and in Uptown, those areas. A lot of people can tell you stories about Judy Kale and her athletic abilities. So, and she was a strong woman. And to this day, I think that had she had been raised in a different era, a different time, she would want to professional sports. So thank you for bringing this up today. Any other members? That's it? That moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment.
We already voted. I'm sorry, forgive me.
That's okay. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state for public comment, that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please?
The first speaker is Joseph Balaban, followed by Stephanie Littlejohn.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council members. It's an honor and a privilege to appear before you today. My name is Joe Balaban. For nearly 30 years, I have lived on Letico Street in the South Side slopes. I'm a pedestrian who regularly uses South 23rd Street to reach the majority of the South Side businesses, including pharmacies, Giant Eagle, and the Carnegie Library. Though South 23rd is a major walkway for folks exiting the east end of the slopes, there is no sidewalk connection along it between Mary and Josephine Streets. Instead, there is broken ground and a gully along the brim of the road where there should be a sidewalk. With cars parked along the side and no sidewalk, pedestrians, like myself, are forced to walk nearly in the middle of the road to pass along this stretch of South 23rd Street. This creates an unsafe, dangerous condition where pedestrians are directly exposed to cars. This hazardous situation has been an ongoing issue. I first reported it in December 2018 and have done so a half dozen more times to City 311 and my councilmen. More than two years have passed, and the problem has not been resolved. The 311 complaints remain open. The reason I'm, the reason I'm here today is to ask for your assistance. Is it possible to have the city meet with the property owner to reach an agreement to create a safe connection that provides pedestrian passage? If not, could the city install a sidewalk on this block? As long as myself and others are forced to walk in the road, we are exposed to cars zooming along this stretch of South 23rd. This dangerous situation is likely to result in an accident with injuries. I sent three photos as far as this presentation. The first shows an older gentleman and a neighbor from Josephine Street exposed to oncoming cars as he walks South 23rd. Another photo shows the line of parked vehicles one has to pass on the roadside of the cars to navigate the street. And lastly, a photo shows the direct path a sidewalk would create between Josephine and Mary Streets if the city or property owner installed a sidewalk. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your efforts to help resolve this public safety matter.
Thank you. I'm certain Councilman Kraus' office will be in contact. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Stephanie Littlejohn.
Stephanie? I don't see Stephanie registered.
Okay, the next person is Stephen Ashman, followed by Ann Wright.
Stephanie Ashman? Ann Wright? Okay. Right on. Thank you.
My name's Ann Wright. I live in South Oakland. I want, I want to thank the council for passing the eviction moratorium ordinance four weeks ago on March 2nd. I want to thank the council on continuing efforts to improve the ordinance and to provide sufficient funding and support to the Commission on Human Relations to fulfill their role in vetting which potential eviction actions do or do not meet the criteria for good cause, as stated in the ordinance. I'd like to encourage the council to keep moving forward on communication with the courts, constables, and other stakeholders about the ordinance, and encourage efforts to quickly implement concrete steps for enforcement. I want to uplift the work of Councilwoman Gross for her leadership on this effort, and of Director Hammond and his colleagues at the commission for creating a process for vetting requests for exemption, which was approved this past Friday. Very much appreciate the hard work they're all doing on this. I've been monitoring eviction filings, and from what I've seen from the last four weeks, the behavior of landlords has not yet been impacted by the ordinance. There've been 107 filings in the Magisterial District serving Pittsburgh on or since 3/2 when the ordinance was passed, 90 of them since 3/5, 31 since I gave a similar report last week. During 2021, there've been an average of 25 filings per week, and that average has not changed. Most of the complaint forms I've reviewed on these filings continue to be for reasons which do not, at least on the surface, meet the good cause requirement of the ordinance. Many of these continue to be strictly for non-payment of rent or end of lease term. We expect the, these filing numbers to decrease once the seriousness of the ordinance is fully communicated. There are currently 55 more hearings scheduled in the districts covering Pittsburgh this week and 109 next week. A total of 375 are currently scheduled, and 343 of them before the end of April. With positive COVID tests jumping 40% in the last week, that's, that's a problem. It's having that many hearings. There've been 110 cases judged for plaintiff in the period of time between 10 days ago and 180 days ago, for which the landlord could request an order for possession at any time. It's important that we set up procedures for applying the same good cause requirements set out in the ordinance to request for orders for possession. There have already been 26 orders for possession issued in these districts since 3/2, 23 of them since 3/5, and eight of them in the last 10 days. We don't know how many of these would or would not meet the good cause requirements, as the requirements of the ordinance have not yet been applied to these requests for orders of possession, or for the ones that'll be issued today, or for an unknown number of days in the future. I do know that these cases that do include ones where the complaint form only includes rental arrears and end of lease term. It's important that we set up processes to apply the good cause requirements to orders for possession requests soon, so that we don't continue to have Pittsburghers who should hypothetically be protected from bending up on the curb. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Emily DeFerrari, followed by Jacob Klinger.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name's Emily DeFerrari. I live in Point Breeze, and I want to echo Ann Wright's comments. And I want to thank City Council and all the activists who have worked so hard to get this eviction moratorium going. Looks like council took your dentures out and hid them under your napkins as soon as you put the food on the table. So I'm just asking that you put your teeth back in because it's time to eat. We need to fund the PCHR. Need to let the landlords, the tenants, and the magistrates know what you've done. Otherwise, it looks like nothing much has happened. We'll be able to figure out how to wash all the dishes when this is all over. But in the meantime, COVID's surging, you all know that, and we need to keep people in their homes. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Jacob? Jacob Klinger? I don't see him on here. Do you?
No, I don't see him.
Okay, next speaker to him.
The last speaker is Ikahana Hal Makina.
Thank you. I see she's, she's on.
Okay.
Thank you. Please take your mic off. Thank you. And please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
Greetings of peace. My title's Ikahana Hal Makina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. This whole region belongs to us. This is a region known as a place where indigenous people roam. We are still here, and we are asking that our rights be respected in our own land. We are still here, and we are asking that our rights be respected in our own land. As I stand upon the shores of our riverbanks, I can only think about how we once traded with each other along these rivers, along these highways and byways in which our ancestors once thrived. And it's through the acts of Congress, through the acts of local municipalities, city council, who have interrupted this natural way of being, this natural state of being with one another. Our rights are not being respected in our own land, and it is time for that to change. You all have taken an oath to support, protect, and defend the Constitution. When will you honor that oath? When will you uphold the words in which you swore to protect, defend the Constitution? We are represented in the Constitution as a reminder in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and it states, and I quote, "and excluding Indians not taxed," end quote. So you see, if you are constitutional people, you will uphold the Constitution and work with the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. We have sent emails, meeting with us once for an introductory meeting, if not satisfactory. These are continuing conversations that must be had. Our rights are being infringed upon. Our people are not safe in our own homes. This is a matter of urgency. This is a matter of public safety. When we are not safe in our own homes, when your municipal officers are busting down doors for light and transit causes and taking possession of our members that do not belong to your municipality. We have our own travel place. We are free to travel upon our own land unmolested, unencumbered. And so we are asking that city council make provisions to ensure our safety, to ensure that our lineage, our children are safe, our elders are safe, and protect it. And it is your duty. Accountability needs to be had. Someone needs to be accountable for their actions. I urge you, city council members, do not ignore us. We are here, and we are not going anywhere. In la quechala que in means, the light in me honors the light in you. Allow your light to shine. Do what is right so you can stand up and be a noble person. We've asked and we've.
Is that it? Thank you. That exhaust list of registered speakers, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that said, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
I do have a paper from Reverend Burgess.
I'm sorry, Brenda.
Have two.
Okay, Madam President, thank you. I wasn't looking at my agenda.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you. It changes the morning right before our meeting, so. So thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Baseball Umpires Association in the amount of six thousand dollars for umpire services during the twenty twenty-one calendar year. Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Five, Resolution Authorizing the City's Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into relevant agreements with Sonatrol of Pittsburgh for security through video monitoring and alarm systems, along with repairs at parks and recreation facilities at set negotiated prices to be determined over a term of three years.
Thank you. And Councilman Cockhill, now I apologize. Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Fix, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Works and of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Peoples Natural Gas Company to provide a permanent easement for additional and/or relocated natural gas pipelines and necessary accessories at the South Side Park as part of the joint city Peoples Natural Gas project to improve the South Side Park in the South Side neighborhood. Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Seven, Resolution, Amending Resolution One Forty-Five of Twenty Nineteen, which authorized the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Quidda for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization by extending the term for two years and an increase of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars for a new cost not to exceed two million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Eight, Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement between the city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to establish ownership and maintenance responsibilities for a flood early warning system within the right of ways of Washington Boulevard, Allegheny River Boulevard, Butler Street, Highland Drive, and further amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-Seven of Twenty Seventeen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Eighteen Capital Budget and the Twenty Eighteen through Twenty Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program by increasing flood control projects by one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents to reflect reimbursement of previously expended city funds. Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Nine, Resolution Approving and Amending to the Articles of Incorporation of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to establish the size of the Board of the Authority at a number not less than five and not more than nine. Bill Number Thirteen Fifty-Nine, Where it meets Amendment Title Seven Business Licensing Article Ten Rental of Residential Houses in Chapter Seven Eighty-Two, Temporary Eviction Regulation for Disease Prevention and Control Due to COVID-nineteen to strengthen its policy directives through certain technical and substantive revisions.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. No new papers, Madam Clerk. I did not have thirteen fifty-nine on my agenda.
It was sent over this morning at ten fifty-four by, I'm sorry, at ten twenty-six. Ashley sent, I'm sorry, Louise sent an updated agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I read it there. Thank you very much. And no new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. Have a good morning. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Thirteen Fifty, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Wheels, Inc. in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents in settlement of a claim for damage to a vehicle from a three-vehicle accident on PASR twenty-two thirty involving a City of Pittsburgh environmental services vehicle. Bill Number Thirteen Fifty-One, Resolution, Amending Resolution Three Forty-Three, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by fifty thousand dollars for a new not to exceed amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Fifty-Two, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city to enter into a no-cost professional service agreement to work with experts from the Harvard University Government Performance Lab to create templates, contract language, and key performance indicators for outcomes-based procurements.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Motion to waive Rule Eight on Bill Thirteen Fifty-Two.
Thank you. That bills in regards to?
That was the Harvard, the partnership with Harvard.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. We have a motion. Councilwoman, second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee's agenda with Councilman Lavelle. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number Thirteen Fifty-Three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a no-cost professional service agreement to work with experts from the John Hopkins University Center for Government Excellence to elevate data governance practice across the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, do you have a motion for a waiver?
Motion to waive. Thank you. Motion to waive the rules of council so that this bill appears on tomorrow's agenda.
You have a second? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
It will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. And we'll now move on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before Council?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
I I was deliberating, but I believe that we should be ready in time. I'm still receiving some feedback from the Law Department, but they think they're going to be ready for tomorrow to discuss the evictions amendment legislation that I just introduced. So I'd like to motion to waive Rule Eight so that it can be on tomorrow's standing committee agenda in case we have everything all ready.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will. Yep, I'll second or third.
Any discussion?
I'll take my comments for tomorrow.
Seeing that, oh, in favor?
Aye.
It will appear, the bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And that moves us on to our, seeing any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our committees for final action. We'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Two, Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Thirteen Thirty-Two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the First National Insurance Agency, LLC, for insurance brokerage services for all necessary policy types. This shall be a no-cost agreement with a term of three years with two one-year options to extend.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are final. I was the name is called. Those opposed, but no, please call the.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Cockhill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Cal Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Cockhill, Committee on Public Works.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number Thirteen Forty-Three, Reported the Committee on Public Works for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twelve Ninety-Seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant to conduct landslide mitigation on Mount Washington and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed nine million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The grant requires a match from the city in the amount of three million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a total project cost of thirteen million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Bill Number Twelve Ninety-Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to construct a place based in Homewood Park. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number Twelve Ninety-Nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to fund the planning of the replacement of the Jefferson Recreation Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Hundred, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from a redevelopment authority of Allegheny County Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund to rehabilitate the Warrington Recreation Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Oh One, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Community Infrastructure and Tourism Fund for site work at the First Tea Club House located in Shinley Park and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Oh Two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Fund for site work at the First Tea Club House located in Shinley Park and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Oh Three, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number Six Forty-Seven, entitled, Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty-One Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty-One CDBG Program and the Twenty Twenty-One through Twenty Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Program by reducing park reconstruction by thirty-six thousand dollars and increasing play area improvements by thirty-six thousand dollars. Bill Number Thirteen Twenty-Five, Resolution Granting unto South Side Works City Apartments, LLC. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install two new projecting banner signs and two canopies at twenty-six oh three Sidney Street, Sixteenth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number Thirteen Twenty-Seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a reimbursement agreement to receive grant funding from the South Side Slopes Neighborhood Association for a lighting project on the Eighteenth Street steps and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, ma'am?
Yes, please, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. So my initial remarks are in reference to Bill Thirteen Hundred and the funding being applied for, the grant funding being applied for to do renovations at the Warrington Recreation Center. I just want to thank Mayor Pudido and his administration for continuing investment in hilltop neighborhoods. This is one of the most important rec centers in the Third Council District. It sits at the intersection of Allentown, Beltsou, and Mount Washington in this actively used seven days a week and, you know, the better part of twelve hours a day. So I'm really encouraged to see money being applied for to invest in this rec center. And just want to recognize the mayor and thank him for his support on that. And then number two is the Bill Thirteen Twenty-Seven, which references a lighting project that was undertaken by the South Side Slopes Neighborhood Association to light the Eighteenth Street steps. And any of you that travel Eighteenth Street at the bend at Edwards Way will be delighted to see a piece of improved safety in terms of the staircase, but also serving as this magnificent piece of public art. And it is though the steps are floating in air at night when they are lighted. It's it's just a magnificent piece of public art and a major increase in public safety. and a major increase in public safety to one of the most used staircases in the city. So I want to thank and recognize the South Side Slopes Neighborhood Association for their diligence in this project. It's a long time coming and they deserve major kudos for their work. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing none, I just also want to thank the administration for the nine million, for the grant, which is over nine million for the project on Mount Washington. I mention this over and over again, that Grandview Avenue is such a gem to the entire region. It's definitely a regional asset. And we've not seen a lot of investment over the decades. But since this administration has been in office, we have seen a lot of investment on Grandview Avenue. Unfortunately, some of it is, has come so late because it's been years of disinvestment that it's requiring a lot more than maybe just basic maintenance. And so I do want to thank the administration for making this a priority and understanding the value of Grandview Avenue to the city of Pittsburgh, but especially to our residents of Mount Washington, Duquesne Heights. It is, it brings a lot of pride to the community, but it's also, it should have been addressed years, years, and years, and years, you know, decades ago. But I think back then, we had directors that were struggling through Act 47 and some other things and priority shift around the city. And so sometimes projects get put on a back burner. And I think this was one of those things that must have happened back in the day where they didn't quite know where the money was coming from just for basic repairs. And so now we're getting this project done and I just want to, and they're just, they're continuing to write grants. And I just want to thank Director Ricks, the administration, and the residents of Grandview and Mount Washington, Duquesne Heights, for their patience as we work through this. I think it's going to be spectacular when it's all done. So I want to thank them all for that. And Councilman Kraus, I used to walk those 18th Street steps back when I went to school at South Side Catholic. We'd walk from Fifth Avenue across what I think was the Brady Street Bridge back then.
Brady Street Bridge.
And then over Carson and then up those steps. I was skinny back then, too. So maybe I should visit those steps again. So I just want to say I'm glad to see them getting some attention, too.
Anyone that wants to forego their gym membership and get a free gym membership, come walk the 18th Street steps. There's a woman, Dolores, she and her son, they live on Pius. She walks those steps three times a day with her son. She's got to have the healthiest heart in the city of Pittsburgh, bar none. But they are a workout and a free gym membership to anyone who wishes to use them for help.
Yeah, I was glad when they blew up the Brady Street Bridges and built the new bridge, the...
Birmingham.
Birmingham now. So anyway, with that said, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor, the passage of vote, aye or the name is called, those opposed vote no. Would the clerk please call the law?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Thank you, everyone, for your votes on this. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. We have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, council will hold an executive session on Bills 1276, 1277, 1278, and 1305. And Madam Clerk, do you know what those bills are in regards to?
A very reference to warrants from law.
Okay, thank you. And council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, March 31st, for the Standing Committee's meeting at 10:00 AM with Councilman Lavelle chairing. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 AM Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by the registration deadline. And do we have anything from members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
So as I said before, that if, whatever we bring up issues that concern African-Americans, I will chime in. And so we talked about the For the People Act in terms of voter suppression. But I think, you know, when you read the will of council, it's somewhat generic as to what we're really combating. And so I want to talk a little bit about that. It always interests me when people who are African-American leadership bring up issues that are theoretically in support of those without saying those things. In today's article, and he says it better than I can say it, so I'll simply read what Tony Norman wrote in today's Post Gazette. His article, I think, is excellent. I'm going to read excerpts of it. And Tony Norman's article in today's Post Gazette is called, Voter Suppression is Ready for Its Close-Up. There really shouldn't be any debate as to whether voter suppression efforts in Georgia and roughly 42 other states are a practical manifestation of white supremacy or not. Georgia is a textbook example of the white supremacist mindset with all of its self-justifying rationalizations on full display. It was on the say. The only persons, people who question whether Mr. Kemp has embraced a white supremacist agenda on voting rights are morally compromised Republicans still enthralled to the former president and lost cause nitwits terrified of Georgia turning permanently blue on their watch. Still the fact that bigots control the governor's mansion and the Georgia's legislature does not exempt those of us who oppose voter suppression efforts from understanding how those afflicted with the white supremacist mindset see the world in both substantive, 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 and symbolic terms. For instance, when we see the notorious photo of Mr. Kemp signing voter suppression legislation under a painting of a well-known slave plantation while six masked white Republicans look on, it triggers a lot of obvious parallels and associations with Georgia's deeply racist past. Is this an example of tone deafness or racist reactionary spiking the ball over a victory they expect to be repeated in other states? There, those who are in the grips of a white supremacist mentality see a lovely painting celebrating Georgia's antebellum past where the 100 Negro servants who worked in it were well-provided for. It was not a concentration camp, in their opinion. They would argue that there's nothing racist about being a white Republican governor signing voter integrity legislation in front of that painting. When we see State Representative Park Cannon, Democrat from Atlanta, a black elected official handcuffed and dragged away by two burly state troopers for the crime of merely knocking on Mr. Kemp's door during the signing of the bill, we see an eerie parallel to the actions of the state-sanctioned slave patrols that once reinforced white supremacy. Those who have a white supremacy mentality are outraged when a loud-talking Negroes banged on the door during Mr. Kemp's photo op. They want to see law and order restored immediately before black militants get the wrong idea about Southern forbearance. Georgia's entire Republican caucus is as racist and devoid of conscience as any legislative body in the Old South during the 19th and 20th centuries. This is a fact. We, and this is towards the end. He goes through lots of stuff about the former voter suppression laws in Georgia, the poll taxes, the literacy tax, all the other things that they did. And he argues that, and then he closed with saying, this is a fact. William Faulkner warned us, the past is never dead. It's not even past. I love that. William Faulkner warns us, the past is never dead, is not even past. In Georgia and in 42 other states, voter suppression is slithering its way back onto the front page. So what we're talking about now is, is, you know, this is not subtle. This is modern racism, white supremacy on full display. And so when we bring up these issues, I will no longer say, I told you, I will not sit passively by and have some kind of generic, half-hearted conversation about it for political points. If we're going to have this conversation, let's have this conversation. I'm willing to have it any day, any place, anywhere. No, we will not allow, I will not allow, white supremists, those who act like it, those who support it, those who do it, I will not allow them to use this forum in any way to do hollow political pandering. I will not allow it. Let's have this go.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse the absent members approving the minutes and adjourn the meetings?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn. Be safe, everyone.